All right, it is 6:01 PM. I'd like to call to order the Concord Carlisle Regional School District to order.
We'll call the Concord School Committee to order.
All right. Let's jump right in. I think we have our CCHS student update. I see their eyes on. Yeah, hello, hello.
Hi. All right, let me share my screen. We have a bit of a more packed update since we are very sorry that we were not able to make the past meeting or so. But I guess to start, we recently, a couple of weeks ago, we had the senior photo shoot and also an assembly on melanoma, which is skin cancer. And it was, that was definitely, the photo shoot was fun and a lot of parents helped out. And the assembly was definitely very informative. And we also got chapstick and bracelets that changed color in the sunlight, so that was fun.
Those Japanese students that visited CCHS last week, I think they're still here. I don't know when they leave, but I know that last week on Wednesday, they had a little, like, information-type presentation thing that they did during one of the flex blocks on Wednesday. And it was just, I heard it was really good and really fun. And yeah.
Yeah, and I, a lot of my friends went to that presentation and there was also, they were able to make, I think I'm gonna butcher the pronunciation, but onigiri?
Nigiri?
Yes, onigiri, thank you. Which was definitely a lot of fun. I unfortunately wasn't able to make it. But also around the same day, we had some very fun Halloween activities. You can see the science department always has some of the best costumes, even better than a lot of the students. So that was definitely a lot of fun to see the students and teachers dressed up and have the costume contest and other, like, very festive Halloween activities. I think there was definitely a lot of, like, spirit around that time.
Last week, throughout the weekend, CCHS's trap premiered. And it was so much fun. If you went to see it, I hope you enjoyed it, because I was in it. And it was really fun.
You were fantastic. You were fantastic, Zaria. So many lines, I was so impressed.
Thank you. But yeah, I heard a lot of good reviews and I'm glad people enjoyed it. It was really fun to perform and yeah.
Yes. That was definitely, I actually watched it too, since I was helping with ticket sales. But yeah, Zaria and everyone else in it was really great and we were so grateful to have so much support. Given that it was such, like, a pretty unknown show, we actually had, like, really good audiences. So that was definitely a lot of fun.
I hear they had a really good publicist for it. Maybe that was why.
I did what I could. I did what I could. Yes, this past weekend, another performing arts thing was the MMEA Senior District Auditions, which I think we had around 60-something students from band, orchestra, and chorus. And the auditions generally went quite well. We got a lot of people who were accepted into senior districts and as well as all-state recommendations. It's a very competitive process, so we were really grateful to have the opportunity to go and to also, like, meet some instrumentalists and performing arts students from other schools as well.
Fall sports are wrapping up. I think a lot of them ended last week. I know I accidentally walked in on a soccer, like, celebration. And the soccer teams won their DCLs, which I think is really cool and very, like, clap it up. And yeah, I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, I don't know that much about sports, but I'm definitely very happy for the soccer teams and also everyone, all of the other sports teams that seem to all have been doing very well this season. Also, November 1st recently passed, which was a very big day, especially for seniors, because of the chaos of early college applications. That's the end of round one and now we have to go for regular decisions. And it was also the end of quarter one, so I think the, there was, I think there was a little bit of, like, toning down the work at, around that time, especially because we had, like, a no homework weekend, but now it's starting to, like, ramp up again as we get, like, into quarter two.
As you said, we had a lot of recent no homework weekends. And I was very thankful, because I was very much stressing these past two weeks, because I also had the trap, which was, it was just a lot of, like, I felt like my life was ending. But yeah, there's no homework weekends, there was an early release today, which is really fun and very, it felt like a much more relaxed day. And there's, it's Veterans Day Monday, meaning we don't have school, so that's always something to look forward to and good to, you know, celebrate our veterans.
Yeah. And also, as everyone knows, hopefully, today was the election results came out and I think it was definitely the subject of a lot of conversation at school. I think a good thing was that generally, I think people were very, like, mutually respectful and we were able to have, like, good conversations in a couple of my classes that were not centered around things like political affiliation, but rather about, like, more generally, just, like, values and morals and, like, being able to, like, how we can have these conversations with people who might disagree with our viewpoints and things like that. Another performing arts update, we just never stop performing, so we have our fall concerts in the next two weeks. I believe the fall band and orchestra are performing next Thursday and chorus is performing on the 21st, the Thursday after that. So those will definitely be very exciting as the first concerts of the year.
And Student Senate is planning Fall Spirit Week.
Yes.
That's during Thanksgiving, or near Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, I think I was supposed to, I forgot to say that, because I'm on Senate. But yes, we are definitely working to do things like the Fall Spirit Assembly, which is usually the half-day before Thanksgiving. And it's very, very popular and lots of school spirit. And then also events like Powder Bowl, which is like the girls' flag football thing, which is also definitely very popular, lots of participation. So we're really excited for that. Yeah, sorry for the very long update and thank you guys for coming.
Thank you so much. Yeah, you guys have a lot going on.
It's wonderful. And actually, I will say that a group of us, well, I should say separately, we all, the two soccer teams played last night. There were some basketball games that have been happening that we had a chance to check out at CCHS, so a lot of really great things happening, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Hi. All right, on to the superintendent report.
Great, thank you. I have some highlights tonight. The kids mentioned a few things, but I might revisit a few as well. The Nani visitors were here all week last week. Certainly, they were at the high school and had a fantastic flex block with them and everyone ended up dancing, the squid dance, it was really fantastic. Concord kids with the Nani kids up on the stage, it was just really magical moments. They also went to Thoreau and did some work with the younger kids and spent some time at the middle school. Brian Miller and I already stopped by the farewell dinner on Friday. They didn't leave till Monday, but they did some Boston-based activities Saturday and Sunday, so Friday was the farewell to Concord kind of moment, so we were able to stop by briefly and wish them off. You're aware, many of you anyway, that we're planning a band trip to Nani in the spring of '26. So Chris Nosie was able to, I felt like it was the torch, Olympic torch being passed where Chris is like, "We'll see you in 2026." Really nice, really nice week. Thank you to Nuno Pinto, who did all the organizing as our advisor to the program now as a teacher-stipend, and obviously the community members who are very engaged. We were able to have the eighth-grade civics fair on Monday. All of the eighth graders do a civic action project as part of the curriculum. And 70 of them, more than usual, we usually do it in May, so I think the change of date helped to encourage participation. About 70 students presented their projects. Bob and I were able to wander around, Shelley too, were able to wander around and have different students give us their pitch and the research they'd done and what they were gonna do next and some really great topics. They're very engaged. MCI Concord was one that I heard, you know, really high-level thinking going on. Last week, we started to talk further on our literacy work at the elementary schools. Last year, we, last two years, we really focused on K-2 and early literacy. We've now shifted to 3-5, although three sort of pivots between both directions. It was a really exciting meeting we had last Thursday. The LA specialists were all there with us from the building and we can start to really see the feeling of a potential vision of how we're gonna finally have a K-5 literacy program. So a lot more to come. We're gonna, you know, engage with the staff and the teachers and get feedback and talk through options. Nothing's gonna happen on a dime, but was starting to really feel that energy, so it was great. I guess my final headline is election-related in the MCAS update. So yesterday, the MCAS was formally repealed per the election outcome. We heard from the commissioner this morning, because we all got up and went, "Now what?" So he did a nice job of getting information to us on a timely way. The direction he's saying right now is, one, the timeline is still unclear. The earliest it could change would be December 5th, depending on how next steps play out. MASIS is suggesting it's probably the class of 2025 as the year goes on, but many of them have passed the test, most of them have, so we need date clarification for sure. The commissioner has said that, and I don't know what to quite mean with this, unless the legislators take the topic up, so I'm not sure what that could look like. He said that we would be diverting back to the plan we had during COVID when the test wasn't being administered, which is a competency determination. Every student has to pass a course in the core content areas that we have been testing. We will still administer the test, I hope everyone's clear about that. It just won't be for the high-stakes graduation requirement. So they will have to have evidence of passing a course in those subjects. We did this in MCAS, we have to go in and certify it through the state. And if they don't pass, they get a certain amount of time to do it, very much like the retests have been. So that was a little comforting that we have a process we already are familiar with, but it feels like there's a lot of details to work out. So it was very good to have information as early as he had it, so. Some more to come on that. Again, it's busy. I was able to attend a good number of the things the high school kids were mentioning. It's just been a really great few weeks of highly engaging student activities.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's good.
Imagine this won't be the only time we talk about the MCAS.
No, I'm sure not. I just thought, given that we were meeting and I just got the information and everyone's wondering what that means, so.
Did you have something on that? Oh, sorry.
I do have something.
Oh, okay.
Before we get started on the regular agenda, question, should we move the goals update to the end of the agenda when we've heard some of the presentation, which might impact how far we are along on the goals? No?
We can certainly, I had a couple of comments and overview prepared for it. I'm fairly indifferent to it.
Okay. Were we going to update the goals today?
I think giving an update and then the one on the 19th, we can give, like, the formal status of from November.
That's fine, that's good.
Yeah.
The other thing is I just wanted to get a clarification on the placement of public comment. I thought we had agreed at our last meeting that we were gonna move it, but it didn't move and I just was a little confused, like, did you decide that you didn't want to move it or?
No, I responded to you, it was just a little late, so I can say publicly though, I made a mistake.
Okay.
I also wanted to be cognizant of Shelley and others that are presenting, just giving them so they can, they're right here all day. In parallel, we are, Carrie and I have looked at other schools and we're just trying it out. I think I just made a mistake and put it further down. What we are gonna try to do, no matter what, because I think it works when we get into things like the consent agenda, even some of our liaison updates, we do want to let the public speak before it. I personally like having public comment after our discussions so that people, of course, there's obviously some topics that people want to discuss, but then I also think it's good if, I'll just take an easy one, like the tree locations. If somebody wants to comment on the tree locations today, I want to give them the opportunity to do so during public comment.
So it left you 13 of our peer districts. I'll do it at the beginning. It's kind of a religion in school committees to do it at the beginning, so.
That's not what we're finding from everything else, so.
There's lots of examples. However, we are not, like, this isn't a...
I'm not bound to it.
We were very upfront that we're just trying to create efficiencies. This is...
I understand.
Our second time we messed around with the agenda last time.
No, no, it's just, I just feel strongly about it and I thought we had agreed and then it didn't happen, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I've fallen on my sword. I made a mistake.
No, no, it's, it's fine.
All right. For the goals, though, just really quickly, so we have two meetings a month. I think this one's a good one to just remind everyone of what we have kind of on the docket for November, give an update. And then I think for November, we can kind of, like, formally pull up the dashboard and actually fill it in. There's a couple of things, so we're actually gonna cover a few things that we have. We're gonna go through the campus completion in the discussion section component. We're gonna go through academic data overview with Shelley, so if you want, if you are tracking the goals, it's section one and I think four, maybe six. So we are gonna go through two big portions of it. I do feel the need to correct one thing and I'm not sure if Brian and Alex are gonna cover it on the campus...
Do you want to share your screen just so that it's up or no?
It's not on here, so I'm just using this as my notes. But for the campus completion, there was some questions that have come up around the amenities building. We're obviously gonna be covering that. You can share it, I mean, I'm not hiding anything. We're gonna be covering the amenities building when we get into the capital component in a couple of weeks. I know Brian and Alexa are gonna give some updates on some grants, but there was a comment that we read in our liaison report from Tracy, she's not here tonight, around usage of some of the fields that was made during the select board meeting, so I just want to correct it because we did pull the reports from both our AD, but also, I can't think of the gentleman's name or the woman's name, I'm sorry.
Lee Jackson, Concord Rec Director.
Yes, we did pull usage and it, I think it was stated that CCHS actually uses the majority of the field usage at both Memorial and Doug White and then the area. It's actually 50-50, I'll say for right now until we do the exact, but I would argue that if you took away the eight to two where nobody's really using it, it earmarked it as CCHS, but it's actually less than that. So I do want to correct that because I think there's just widespread confusion as to who owns and runs the Doug White Fields and the usage of Memorial. There's a lot of youth sports, not just run by recreation, there's youth sports, there's rec, and there's the high school. So I did just want to clarify that because during the comments, when you guys go through it, it's really a community space that we steward, happy to do that. Anyway, just wanted to put that clarification out there. So that's just from a broad goals overview, but to your point, we'll go through the more details component that we have earmarked for the schedule tonight and then we'll actually formally go through the tracking at the next meeting. All right, so that's A. Moving on to section B of discussions, we have the CPS budget transfer. Bob, do you want to take us through that?
I got it.
So budget-wise for CPS, we really, what we're presenting tonight is a little bit past Q1, because we presented in August, an update on some budget pressures. So this is up through, a little bit past Q1, end of October. We really haven't made many budget transfers yet. You'll see the numbers are fairly small in the transfer and adjustment column. As a reminder to everybody, this is the format, we typically present our quarterly data. The DESI function categories are down on the left-hand side. I've added a section this year. One of the things that offsets our general fund budget is circuit breaker and the IDA special ed grant. And we typically don't apply those funds until a little bit later in the year, partly because we need the IDA grant to be approved by DESI and it hasn't been approved yet. So I've added the second-to-last column. Kind of looking through it, a big picture, the main story is here is that we're, we do have some out-of-district tuition pressures. And using circuit breaker funds and IDA grant funds, we anticipate, we're confident we have offsets of 1.3 million. And we have about $180,000 we'll need to offset in other parts of the budget, whether it be reductions in spending in other areas or usage of circuit breaker reserves. And that's something Dr. Hunter and I have been talking about and we're working on and we'll have a plan for. So there's a little bit, there's a lot more detail, I'll tell you, on CCRSD to go through, but for here, at this point, early in the year, we haven't had to make transfers. I will say that adjusted balance on the far right, that doesn't mean we have $3 million left that we're gonna have at the end of the year. That means that's what we've encumbered so far, doesn't include, like, all the maintenance costs that we don't know that we're gonna need to do yet, doesn't include substitute teachers, doesn't include a lot of things that haven't been ordered yet. So I just wanted to caution, sometimes that number makes it look like we have a lot of money and it's not necessarily the case.
Maintenance of PBD?
Maintenance of all of our buildings.
Oh, okay.
We could have something break here, I need to repair it. We could have a preventative maintenance we want to do that we might not have put in the PO for yet. So I don't know if this is, this is the discussion portion, so later on, I'd be asking for a vote to approve the...
We're gonna vote right after this, so.
Okay. So I guess the request then is to approve the transfers and adjustments, the budget transfers as presented this evening.
For CPS?
For CPS, right now, correct.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Please. Thanks, Bob. Great, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you, Bob.
All right, we can now move on to the Q1 fiscal year '25 CCRSD budget transfer.
So Dr. Hunter and I have recognized that this district needed a lot more attention and time looking at some of the moving parts we've had. And so what I'm presenting reflects a lot of work already. And you can also see a little bit tighter financial constraints on this budget. I've added a couple other pieces of information to this, same information on circuit breaker and IDA, but on the, below the balance of 7.6 million, it's a little bit misleading. There's fixed charges for certain things like health insurance that are not encumbered due to a mechanical issue with how we process those, so I wanted to reflect what those costs are that we already know will be incurred over the course of the year. And then debt service, which we also know what our payments are gonna be. So when you look at that, you see we have a little bit less than 1.4 million estimated available through the end of the year, which is fairly tight. So in looking down the transfers and adjustments, one of the things we have savings on already, we had a retirement for a tech specialist at the high school and a decision was made, we collectively made a decision not to fill that in FY '25 due to the budget pressures we're facing. And it will be our intent to, we're anticipating now to bring that forward in FY '26 again, but to use that to offset some of the challenges we have right now. The instructional leadership transfers and adjustments really reflect some savings we've had on replacement hires with retirees replaced by lower-cost salaries of newer employees. The other school services is over primarily due to transportation. It's a combination of special ed transportation. We've had some challenges obtaining, filling some routes and needed to contract in a couple cases. And in the homeless transportation, we pay and we get reimbursed for later, so we're fronting that cost. And again, we will get some money at the end of the year to reimburse us for that. It doesn't help us budget-wise. There is a way to kind of offset that, that we can talk about later in the year if we need to. The fixed charges is savings. We followed the town, you know, the, we got some guidance from the town CFO about this, about social security and enrolling in OBRa, and we followed their lead and so we're no longer contributing to social security. Staff are contributing into OBRa, so we're saving about $55,000 a year. So that goes right to us and the employees' contributions are going into a 4057 or 403 plan. And then the last one highlights where we are with out-of-district tuitions, approximately $500,000 over budget. And so this is what we've spent the most time talking about. We anticipate we can come up with about $100,000 in offsets through the operating budget by careful management in multiple places, whether it be supplies and materials, whether it be software, whether it be potentially PD, and there may be some other areas. The other thoughts, so that leaves about $400,000. And so what we've talked about is using $200,000 in circuit breaker, and this is not in action right now, these are just kind of sharing our thoughts on where we are. Using $200,000 in our circuit breaker reserves to help offset it. And also, we have a budgeted OPEB trust contribution of 425 and reducing that by 200 and using that to offset it. So we feel like those would be ways that we can mitigate this without affecting students and staff and helping us provide the same supports to students while also addressing the budget challenges, which we hope are short-term, but we need to manage this year first before we look ahead.
OPEB's really healthy, right?
OPEB's healthy, it's over $10 million, it's over 64% funded.
So this reduction means we still are far ahead?
And we're not...
Just not getting farther ahead.
Correct, and we're not spending any of the OPEB money. Once it's funded, you can actually use it to pay for our OPEB benefits, which is we pay about $300,000 a year, so. But I mean, I don't know, my analogy is, you know, we have something important we need to support now and we have this $10 million fund, like, would you, had to go to the hospital and cut your grocery bill?
Even eight, seven and eight years ago, when we had no circuit breaker and E&amp;D was under 3%, and OPEB was really healthily chugging along, Moody's made it very clear to us that having no at-hand reserves in a time, accessible at-hand reserves was much more important than saving for the future. So to me, this is a pretty smart decision, unless we come up with something else and can still do it, but at least this way, we know in November, I mean, we kind of, finally yesterday, admitted how stressful this kind of is to be half a million out this early in the year. This would give us the ability to know we've got a place to go, at least to say $200,000 from circuit breaker and $200,000 from OPEB. We've got most of it in hand and now we just have to manage going forward and not be so focused on the arrears unless some great opportunity pops up that allows us another option. But we thought it was important to start to show you how we could, you know, start to say this was more balanced from here on if we were to look at those two options.
So, yeah, we don't want to be the district that waits until the spring and says, "Oops, we have a problem, we need to go to town meeting." So we're trying to solve what we can now and... So that's where we are. This is kind of a high level of summary of a lot more work that we've done on it, but we feel like we have a handle on where we are now and how we can address it and...
And just to remind, you know, we're just closing the first quarter of the school year, so that's a lot of school year to go with unknowns.
Any questions?
So does this reflect any investment in the launch retail space?
No, not as of yet.
Not as of yet. That'll be about $20,000 for the year that's left, for what's left of the year.
Just for the rent?
Just for the rent, operating costs, like, utilities are included.
Right, but no startup costs are anticipated?
We're still working through the plan, it'll be nominal.
Okay, it would just be nice to see, like, a plan.
Yeah, we haven't signed the lease yet, we're still working through that, so if we have the keys, we'll make the plan and bring it to you.
Just seems like we're already in a risky spot, so we didn't budget for that. I know we're anticipating getting revenue, but probably not this year.
Yeah, I'm more comfortable now that the numbers are smaller than they were with the first property, so I think $20,000's manageable and whatever small startup costs we'll have seem doable.
Compared to the...
It was hundreds of thousands in the other property with a...
With the startup costs.
With a rent of three times as much, so.
All right. I will, I'd love to hear a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve the Q1 FY '25 CCRSD budget transfers.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you, Bob. All right, let's move on to the 250th tree locations, I believe. I believe Krista Collins is here from the 250th Tree Committee.
She is, and I'll-
Yep.
Okay, great. Preview this while she gets settled. So we've been talking with Tricia for many, many months now as chair of the 250th Tree Committee, since she reached out and said they had a lot of interest in putting trees on the schools. So these have been vetted quite a few times as to the location of the trees, but I didn't want to be the only one, so I would like you to all look at what we've proposed and Krista's been great, we're working with CPW, it's a pretty collective effort, but seemed important that you all see it and give it a blessing. So Krista, we'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. So, yeah, we have a number of trees located at the high school. We have, in fact, most of the trees are at the high school, but we also have trees at Alcott and Ripley and Thoreau as part of the new landscape design, and Willard. We originally talked about covering some of the trees at the middle school and it just got to be too complicated with the contractor, you know, using two different contractors. So let's see, I'm, I don't, I wasn't prepared to share screen, but that's probably what you want to see.
We have-
We have.
They have it, I can-
Oh, you do? Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've looked, I've looked at them.
Oh, great, okay, thank you.
They do have it, so I think it's, just talking it through will be fine.
Okay. I did, I just want to point out, because you probably, since you got those, I did talk to, because Lori had flagged the issue of parking, overflow parking for kicks at the corner of Walden, the entry drive at the Walden Street entrance. I did talk to, or exchanged messages with Trish Seifer and Anne Remington about that and decided that in that area to kind of just push all the trees to the periphery so that they wouldn't interfere with parking. And I know Laura, you had mentioned the area outside the cafeteria where the, that kind of half-circle area, and I looked at that again, there are a lot of big oak trees there and they're going to get really big. I mean, it's going to take a long time for them to get big, but I didn't, I didn't really, I wasn't sure if they, if another tree would fit in the middle of that space.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah.
So I got the visual up, so this is the high school, and I'll try to keep up as we switch schools.
Yeah, yeah, so just as I just mentioned, that, yeah, that area right there, I pushed all those trees around the edge.
These are going to get spread out then.
Yeah. So, any questions about this? And I did also keep in mind, you know, I know solar in the, solar panels in the detention basin has come up in the past, and I know it's not everybody's desire to see them there, but I did leave them out of that area, the trees, just in case.
What school do you want to do next?
Why don't we jump over to Alcott?
Sure.
So, yeah, most of these are kind of along the parking lot and entry drive and a few to shade the areas and the edges of the playground. Made a few adjustments last time Lori and I talked, just to keep them away from some of the play structures. There was one that was pretty close to the Gaga pit, so, but, you know, these are, I think the nice thing about these is that they're going to be shading a lot of the most, the hottest, most impervious areas, and, but still leave those play, you know, the playing fields open for use.
Thank you.
Okay, and then why don't we go to Ripley? Yeah, so here we place a few, the trees that are, that are suffering around the parking lot, you know, trying to keep in mind where snow is going to have to be plowed and things like that. And then also at the suggestion of Public Works, added a few more, kind of along the entry drive where sometimes people hang out and watch, you know, watch the kids soccer games, so to provide a little bit more shade in those areas. And again, just trying to, you know, mitigate some of the hottest areas on the campus.
Thank you.
Okay, and then why don't we go to Thoreau?
Yeah. So Thoreau, we've been coordinating thought processes with the Playground Committee and the Big Picture Campus Design. CPC asked us if we had talked with the 250 Tree Group, which was great to say yes, so we're trying to coordinate all the different efforts.
How does, on the Thoreau one, how does it work with timing as far as all of the construction is likely to be ongoing there? Would it happen after?
After, so the playground will probably be first, maybe the little bit of extension of parking before that, and then the Big Picture Landscape Campus Field, all of that. First, we have to get CPC funding, and then we need a design.
The trees.
The trees are going to coordinate into that and they know where we're going to do things, so it's a little iterative, but we'll make sure it works.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, ideally this, it would happen fall of 2024, but I think if we had to kind of push it out to spring, I'm sorry, 2025, but if that didn't work with the timing, we push out to spring 2026.
I know, they're not, yeah.
And then Willard is the last site.
Great. I'm going to see if they can help us with these screens that are strobing in here.
So, you know, same ideas with Alcott here, trying to shade some of the parking and entry drives and then the, kind of the perimeter of the playing field, have a nice big shade tree, and then some in the back playground. And all of these, you know, the contractor will have to come out and vet the sites much more closely, and so there may just be kind of some adjustments if they need to avoid, you know, some, be a little farther away from play areas, or if there are any utilities that have to be planned around. So it will be, there will be final vetting when it comes time to plant. And we, and the trees are all native to the Northeast, and we tried to do a nice variety so that we wouldn't have any monocultures waiting to be killed by the next disease that comes along. And it's, you know, mostly shade trees, we tried to do bigger trees, but there, you know, there are some smaller flowering trees just for kind of spring interest and, again, just more diversity.
I thought for the high school campus, all these trees you picked were beautiful.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
So.
Yeah, so that's it. And I think, I suspect that next spring is when they'll start to go in, and I'm coordinating with Eric Shaw at Public Works on all of that, but he's going to be pretty much driving that process with the contractor once the contractor is selected.
Right, and CPW is going to be owning care of the trees for a while.
Yeah, the contractor will be responsible for watering for the first two years and then Public Works will take over.
Right, so we're in agreement that they're welcome on our property to care for the trees and we are not going to need to take that on, so.
And how many, I know it's 250 trees, but how many are on our, I didn't actually count all of the-
The green dots.
How many are on school property?
You know, I had a tally at one point and I can't remember.
I think it was 114 or so.
It was a big number.
Yeah, definitely over 100. We originally had 154 and I think we had to, we had to, that we couldn't fit that many really, yeah, so.
Thank you for putting them near the fields because being on the sidelines a few times, appreciate that.
I think it's going to be a really nice community asset for our schools and for the broader community.
Well, thank you all so much for your support.
Yeah, any questions, guys?
One quick question, can you just describe to us where the money's coming for this project?
So there's $125,000 coming from community preservation funds, $125,000 coming from ARPA funds, we got a $50,000 gift from Middlesex School towards the project, and then we're doing some more fundraising, some of the other private schools have also pledged, and we've got some private gifts coming in. So trying to get to 400,000, still have a little ways to go, but, and there might, there might be a little bit left over from the CPW tree planting budget this year.
Awesome.
So, yeah, we're cobbling together a number of different sources.
And Krista, too, this is Alexa. We have gotten, it's really early, but we've gotten very positive response from the different PTGs in hopes that the idea would be the PTGs were going to raise some money, so some of the trees would be like the class of 2027 tree, that kind of thing. So that response has been positive.
Right.
We ran into Krista, Diane, and I don't know, and I got roped into some fundraising, trying to help you guys out.
All right.
So, you know, just because, you know, being a parent, we have access to some good resources, and the response has been really great, so I know I owe you an update and I guess I've just given it to you.
All right, fantastic, thank you. Well, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions they have.
Logistically, it's just taking a little bit of time.
Yeah, that's understandable, there's a lot going on.
Any other questions for Krista or comments? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all, good night.
Same to you.
Great. All right, next, as I mentioned, I think all of us when we were doing our goals around the table had a pretty big interest in the academic data overview. So a couple weeks ago, I know Carrie had reached out asking if anyone had anything in particular. We took that in addition to Shelley's guidance and Dr. Hunter's guidance. We, as a committee, got a pretty robust overview. I know there was an interest in math that came up during our goals, I saw math was in there. Everyone had the pre-read, the ask was to come prepared, anything specifically we wanted to cover. So some of you may have questions prepared for Shelley, but Shelley, do you want to take us through some of the highlights?
Yes. So I'm going to share the slide.
I don't know if they're going to be able to do anything with the screens, I'm sorry, it's not good.
Yeah, it's kind of, but if you're watching on Zoom-
Yeah, if you're on Zoom, you're all right, it's just the folks in the room.
Even my screen looks a little... All right, I gotta restart, sorry.
You can share it if you want to just tell me how to scroll through.
Thank you. Okay, so I am sharing with you spring 2024 academic data, a strong focus on MCAS as well as other spring and fall data that we have so far. We're going to be talking about ELA, math, and science, as those are the three MCAS testing content areas, but as you know, this is not exhaustive of all the assessments in all the content area that we teach in and measure student growth on. Next slide. Quick overview of what the MCAS system is. You are going to see achievement level percentages for schools. You're going to also see student growth percentiles, which measures how a student performed in a previous year and how they are advancing in the next grade level. And then in terms of individual student level achievement, you have scores from 500 above, which are considered meeting and exceeding expectations. And then anything below 500 either falls under partially and not meeting. So within our accountability system, there's really just multiple measures that we're looking against. There's the normative component that really just assesses or measures how students are performing at their school, in their grade level. And then the criterion referenced component is how is a district or school doing as a whole on DESI-aimed targets? The targets that DESI sets for different subgroups, different criteria. As you can see, it's about achievement, it's the student growth percentile, it's for the high school, you're going to look at high school completion and other factors of different subgroups, as well as, for example, attendance, and they also have a metric on your lowest performing students and how they're doing. So that can only be measured if you, if those students have been in the district or school for consecutive years. It's a little confusing for me on that component. But overall, if you want to go to the next slide, that accountability is really just telling us where we are as a district and each of our schools. So DESI categorizes each school or district into limited or no progress, moderate, substantial progress, or meeting or exceed. So we are meeting or exceeding across all schools and across the district, which means we're pretty much in the top 10%, so kudos to the educators and leaders across the district because it takes a lot of work and effort.
Shelley, why don't we stop there and see if they have questions? Just because they've had, and then they have all the data that follows, I think that's a great headline we just ended with. The data is also broken out by subgroups and there's a lot to talk about, so Shelley, see if, I guess, if they have questions.
Yeah.
I'm going to stop sharing just because I know you're going to hop around when you ask questions.
Yeah, yeah, so like we said, there's about 30 slides in the pre-reads. Did anyone have anything specific? I know there was a question in our goals around AP, I think that's on slide 27.
Yep.
Was there anything in specific there that is on that slide that people wanted to talk about or question?
Can I ask about the accountability scores on the slide that was up just now? You don't need to pull it back up or anything, but do you, so there is like variation in the schools, as not everybody's going to be the exact same, but just because I know you've been in other districts and we have a really experienced team, is that typical to see some moderate variation between the different schools in a district? Do you find that that's very common and just sort of the way it is?
Yeah, I mean, especially in larger districts, you're going to have more variability. And I think to recognize our district is comprised of the three elementary schools that do have some different populations in terms of special ed and programming, so I think that factors into some of the way you look at accountability. But again, these are all, these scores are all in your top 10 percentile, and it's, it's pretty much showing typical to high growth for most students. So I think we should, you know, celebrate that and recognize that the schools are making some significant progress, although there are, we know, gaps and-
There are definite achievement gaps that we're going to, that we're working on, and we saw some progress in certain spaces. The high school really made progress in a number of their subgroups, including the black students, Hispanic students. We saw double-digit progress there. We still have a long way to go, but we started to see some really great growth. That's the effort we're making down K8 now is really honing in. And in K5, we've really realized, until we get tier ones totally stable, especially in literacy, it's harder to adjust tier two and three because tier one is different in every classroom to some extent, so. But those, that's the work we're doing. We've talked a lot with Angel about disabilities and how those, you know, that can't lower expectations, it has to be a way to accommodate and modify and still reach those high goals. So we're really working with the sped staff and the regular educators. It's both, and I think I need to stress that because if we aren't giving access to curriculum because services are getting in the way, that becomes a secondary issue. So we're in it, and I think you saw Shelley's slides of a lot of the outcomes of what we're working on in the instructional and pedagogical approaches, as well as the trainings and the PD, she's going to do more on that later in November, but certainly the different populations matter, and every school has a profile of different kinds and shapes, so.
So that was actually my question, because I know that the AP exams have come up, we're tracking it in our goals, so I don't know if it makes sense to jump to slide 27 and 28 just because of what you just mentioned.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And I want to make sure we're covering what we said we were going to cover.
Great. Let me find it here.
Yeah. So with that slide on AP exams and SAT, you can really see that from 2020, the number of students who are in AP courses and taking AP exams is significantly higher. So more than 300 exams taken, and more than 100 students who are scoring three or higher on those exams.
Just for people who might not be familiar who are watching, can you explain the the range? So is a three good?
Yes. It's three, and then five is your highest score. So anyone who's considered a three or five, colleges really look at that and are looking at proficiency and thinking of what you're giving you potential credit for some of that if you score three or higher.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, just for everyone else, we speak this so casually.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
And when you think about it, the percent of total AP students, even though the number has grown, I mean, to think that we're maintaining a steady 94% who are making that progress, I think that's really strong. On, if you want to keep talking about AP on slide 28.
Thank you.
That high school, the high school is really focused on equity.
Yes.
And I really applaud them for naming it and having tough conversations and really thinking critically about how we support our students. So while the numbers are low in terms of the number of tasks, their big takeaway is that if you offer challenging curriculum, rigorous, rigorous instruction, engaging learning, that students can thrive. And so the goal really is to encourage, promote, and support more students. And I think from that K through eight lens as well, we're thinking about what do we need to do to set our students up for success, to be ready to transition to ninth grade. And we even had a meeting today with the principal at Carlisle, as well as the middle school, to start talking about like that transition.
The department chairs were here too, right?
Yeah. So it was principals, department chairs, really think about, you know, what are some of the gatekeepers? What are the ways that we are thinking about curriculum and instruction, intervention, and then how do we support all different types of learners and students that are coming into a new building and new expectations? So they're very deliberate, and we're really trying to be deliberate with how we support our students and acknowledge really some of these gaps we're seeing.
That's great. So maybe just from some context, then I definitely want anyone else to chime in. What we committed to as a goal is obviously benchmark and review participation in an offering of AP classes. So we're doing that by pulling this information. So thank you very much. I think the next piece, though, is really what Ayesha had brought up a little while ago around that K through eight. So I'm really happy to hear about that pipeline. And then I think just for the rest of the committee, one of the things that we had asked about is to make sure we have an equitable lens and really look at the achievement gap. So this is our our first step into it. We're not going to obviously pull the information every month, because we just, it's not going to change. But what do we, you know, at the end of the year, what do we think? And maybe we can't answer this tonight, but maybe something to think about as we go through our goals in the next meeting, is what does success look like for us to feel like we have a handle on this?
Do we have historic trends on on these data points? Because it's fine to see what happened last year, but has there been any change over the last few years?
We can go back at least five years, I think, if you want to look at MCAS data. And I'm sure the high school has.
Yeah, they have the AP. They definitely have the AP as well. Yeah.
So I have a question about total AP students. That means the kids who are taking the exams, not the kids in the classes.
Correct.
That's another data point I think would be interesting, is having access to the class. You don't necessarily have to take the exam, but it definitely gives you a better support system. The other thing is you don't need to be in an AP class to take the exam, as we well know.
Right.
So and we don't have AP humanities classes. And we know we have kids taking AP humanities exams. So I think some of the, you know, I don't want to spend hours and hours on the data, but I think sometimes people, members of our community have concerns that we don't offer enough AP classes. And I think it's important to show that we have X numbers of kids taking humanities AP exams where they're not taking the classes.
Agreed.
You know, so.
And to the actual, just because I want to make sure I understand. So I hear you on everything, and I've heard both sides of it. But on slide 27, which we're on right now, that top right where it says total AP students, when I read the 376, that is the number of students that are enrolled in an AP course. Is that correct?
No, I think it's the number of.
Okay, so they are taking exams.
Students who are taking AP exams.
Exams. Okay.
Are they individual students? So like, if I take the math and biology, am I counted as two people in that 376 number?
Number of exams is the next number.
Yes, right.
Hope that's that number.
376 people, 839 exams.
So you're right. Our kids are often taking more than one.
Yeah, okay. But so 306 juniors and seniors took AP exams. Okay, so individuals.
376 students took a total of 839 exams.
Wow.
So the other thing is, this number is actually going up much more because the numbers of kids is dropping.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to express that accurately.
Say that one more time.
Our student population is dropping a little bit. So this is a lot more students.
It's a higher percentage.
Higher percentage of students are taking AP exams in years past.
So if it's out of interest to you, we can dive into which tests they're taking and some groups of who's taking which test and some of those other things. Absolutely.
Is that like super easy to do?
I think the high school has access to all of that.
I think that would be really interesting to see. I don't, I know it's not something that we can make actionable, but I'm.
Yeah.
Well, I have a question. My question is, I see on the side, it says 147 students, and then it breaks down the score distribution. How many of those students are black?
Um, we would have to.
How many are currently enrolled in AP courses?
To the bottom, do you mean this?
That gives me a percentage. It doesn't tells me what's the accuracy on what the students are. That just says passing rate. Is it 10 kids to get 85%?
Right. We would have to tell you the number.
Is it five kids?
We'll have to pull the number.
Yeah, that's a question that I've been asking for quite some time. So if we can get that for the last several years, we can have a reflective point, because that's one of the concerns that I have, is the lack of participation when it comes to the Boston MECO students taking these courses.
Yeah, we agree.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I think just if I'm hearing it's specific to the AP, we want, like Brian and Domingos are both saying, just a retro, a retro view would be great, just to see where we were coming from, where we are today. The percentage of students, just to kind of what Cynthia was mentioning, just maybe we can visualize that for the next one. And that doesn't mean the next meeting, by the way, the next time we review this, because I want to be clear. We have a few things going on on the 19th. And then I think just the number of students versus the percentage of students, especially on slide 28, when we're talking about black students, Hispanic students.
Students of color and some other high needs groups. Yeah.
Okay. Did I miss anything else in that?
So it says seven tests underneath it. How does that differ?
It doesn't tell us how many kids that is. It could be three kids took.
Taking two.
Put up across those tests. We need the, he's right. We need the breakout.
It could be seven students. It could be less.
It could be two students taking three or four exams. Yeah. Okay.
So just to kind of piggyback on what Cynthia said about what we offer per se at AP, math and science, we have AP offerings. Humanities, we don't. English, we're really working with the English department to align curriculum and promote the taking of the test without having to use the AP curriculum, which is a whole different discussion. It's a little trickier in in social studies, because you've got to map the course, which we have a lot of rich electives that we really love promoting the kids in, that don't necessarily as easy aligned. So that's just sort of the landscape that we come off of. I think, given that, the numbers of kids taking and sitting for tests is pretty incredible. But we'd love to give you the background on all of it. Yeah.
That's great. I think this is a good first pass, and I'm happy.
Yeah.
This, you know, it's on our goals. Like I said, we asked for math. I know, Domingos, you brought up the AP component. I think the comments on pipeline of what you're looking at, especially K through five versus, and then K through eight as a whole, to, and thank you for meeting with Carlisle. That's huge, just with that transition that you're talking about.
I mean, we talked about that here in this room yesterday as a K-12 administrative team, that the high school can only work with what it receives. So we need to keep those discussions alive.
As we think about this in the next meetings, I would love for that to be part of the conversation of like where, so I appreciate these meetings that are happening, but what are the goal, like, are we setting any goals around?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. So like, I'd love to see some of that work from the K to eight in particular, because obviously, to your point, that's where it starts.
Yeah, there's a lot to talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're having the conversations, which sometimes Carrie, the goal is the conversation.
Totally. 100%.
To start peeling those layers back about what's causing what.
And then also on the, I just want to note, I think that across the board, the like, the pass rate is really high, especially considering, I mean, these are, this is just total numbers, 93, 93.62%. And that that includes students who are taking classes that we don't even offer. So.
Right.
That's.
Yeah.
Good. Good. And I appreciate the takeaway on page, on slide 28, Shelley, just about how, when given the opportunities, kids rise to the challenge.
This is really drawn from the high school team, that leadership team. And they started with this. They had a whole slide deck at a faculty meeting to really launch, just looking at data, really drilling down, and then thinking about department goals, having schoolwide, and then your department goals, and really just continuing that conversation and benchmarking in similar ways you're talking about here, so that they're really thinking about systems and structures, and then the interventions and supports.
I think those of you who are here, a year ago, almost a year ago, we talked about the faculty meeting where the high school principals put up a slide deck, a tale of two schools, and disaggregated the white population from all the subgroups. And it's pretty jaw dropping. So that's been the catalyst to, you know, start the hard conversations at each department and pedagogy and curriculum. And what are, each department's really got to make its own plan, but they're facing those data points and really strategizing them now.
Agreed.
And I'm not going to say it's a linear path. It's not. It's a lot of.
No, but I think that's why it was good that we, the pipeline conversation around what's happening in K through eight. And if we want to have a follow-up on that in the new year with Shelley, we can certainly, you know, add that in to our agenda, you know, January, February, whatever we, as ever we see fit.
A lot of it's placement, which is a whole nother discussion.
Yeah.
Levels and things.
Can I ask a question about math in the middle school? I know that we, I've just lost track personally. I know that new curriculum was made, was put in place this year for all grades six, seven, and eight? That's correct?
Seven, six and seven, eight had it for the past year.
So.
They're a year ahead.
Okay, so these, so the scores that we're looking at for eighth graders reflect their exposure.
A one-year exposure to a curriculum where the pipeline wasn't in place.
Yeah, yeah, no, of course. Right, right, right.
Our new go-to.
It was a little bit just.
Right. So it's going to take some time to see potentially whether that yields some gains for us.
Yeah, it absolutely should. Right?
Did we see any, I didn't see disaggregation by grade. Did we see any gains in eighth grade? Oh, wait, where?
17, on the right.
Oh, God. Oh, yeah, we did. Okay, yeah.
I was going to ask about that. That's the outlier, the eighth grade?
Yeah, I'm not going to say that one year in a new program where the national work.
Maybe there was like a miracle.
There wasn't some huge jump where we're like, wow, we just solved it.
Maybe that's showing the sixth and seventh grade curriculum. But my point is, the frustration I always have with MCAS sits at the end of the year, which I understand. You know, it's like a, do at the beginning, they're not ready. And but now that they moved on to the high school, has there been any assessment of these students to see if they are behind?
Oh, in terms of.
They do start at the start.
Yeah, they all take star.
Regular assessments.
We've dip-sticked again and looking at that data. We also did some work over the summer, middle and high together, to look at where kids have been placed. And actually, we bumped a bunch of them up and didn't just put them in a lower level class because of certain factors that we have too long defaulted to, and sort of pushed the envelope. And, you know, for this coming year, we're undoing any last remnants of leveling in grade eight. It's essentially gone, but there were a few kids still not quite getting the algebra they needed as teachers tried to backfill skills. So we're just fixing that, sending everybody off to ninth grade with algebra going forward in totality in '25, '26. So there's a lot of moving pieces that we're identifying. And I think structures and systems are a big part of that. And then it's also the individual child and decisions we make about a certain student. So.
Yeah, in my preliminary, just starting to learn more about middle school and having some conversations with the math department and department chair, they really are thinking about looking at exam, for example, MCAS item analysis. They know where the weaknesses are. So they're talking about geometry and how that seems to miss the mark. And so then they're looking at scope and sequence, thinking about sixth, seventh, eighth grade, and considering where does that kind of spiral in, and where are they building those skills across sixth and seventh grade to prepare them for eighth grade algebra, and making sure that they're reteaching and continually like making points of entry throughout the school year. So it's not geometry all as one unit, and they forget it right before MCAS, or having to cram it all in at the end of the school year. So really think about mapping across sixth through eighth, now that they have an aligned curriculum.
And I want to add, and Shelley's becoming our whiz at this, this is, all these slides are coming out of Open Architect, which is our new data platform that we spent last year building. And all of the data from all these sources is getting inputted, so it's at their fingertips. I didn't, I learned today, I was at the high school, and Brian Miller's going through all the first quarter grades, which were just uploaded into Open Architects in one screen. He's got the child's, all their data and scores, their grades. I'm like, wow, we're, we're really flying here. So.
This is the richest presentation I've seen on academics.
She's becoming our pro. We're rolling Open Architects out to the, we're making our way to the teachers with Open Architects, which is obviously the goal, starting with the department chairs and some of the other building level leaders, so they feel proficient at it. And then teachers will have access to the platform for their own students. And what they're going to be really thrilled by is this long-term need of being able to see the whole child, and not just their little piece of what they work on with a child. And I think that's going to be really powerful.
That's great.
Remind me, is that nine to 12, or is that?
Open Architects is K-12.
Yeah, K-12.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
And then I just want to, I know Ayesha's not here, but something that she has talked about in our goals conversation was, as we continue this conversation, was making sure that we're talking about the IEP analysis. So as we think about the K to eight piece of it, just making sure that we're looking at the IEPs.
Absolutely.
And you, yeah, great.
Angels right there at the table, having the conversations. At our level, you know, the sped administrators at middle, high school, and elementary are at the table there. And then obviously, we're going to bring the teachers in.
Yeah.
All right. So we have some follow-up items for sure. We'll revisit this again, maybe in a couple months. We have a big, big part of November and December on Capitol, but I think in January, this might be something we should look at. But I think we're making good progress in terms of just pulling it and having a benchmark view. And then to Brian and Domingos' point, we'll do retro, current, and then what future looks like.
I had one more question.
Yeah.
The comps you pulled on slide 6, 7, 8 with the other districts.
Yeah.
Do you have the subgroup level data for other districts as well? Like, for example, the data on 10, 11, 12?
Yeah.
Would you have that for the, our comp district set?
If you look, and maybe you can't click on it, but there's a link, and I can just share it with the whole group or share with Lori, to get that to you. And we did an analysis of comparable districts. So the, these slides come directly from Open Architect. So they're pulling from those districts that use this data platform, but it may not be like districts. So I put together another set of comparing. like districts. So I put together another set of comparing our students as a whole to other like districts to Concord. Then I pulled out students of, students on IEPs as well as Black students, as some comparisons across.
Well, I guess the point of my comment is, maybe other districts on these subgroups are seeing increases where we're seeing decreases, and it's a good talking point to their superintendent or whoever about what they are doing to improve where we're not.
Yeah.
So that, that would be interesting to me.
Yeah, we'll definitely pull that.
Yeah, I mean, you'll see a range.
If like, we have a good thing going, then we can share that.
Yeah.
You'll see a range of that, but the, I mean, we know this gap in opportunity-achievement gaps are not limited to just here.
Right, I think it'd be good to see that.
Yeah.
For sure.
Not that it changes, yeah.
MCAS is all there on DSC, you can see all this for every.
MCAS, you can, yeah. Just as a communication tool, because I thought this was such a rich set of information, and we're always asked for data, so I'm going to push it out in my Friday email to parents. And the finance committee has gotten it in the memo. We sent them on some other questions they had as follow-up, the Concord one. We should get it to Carlisle, too, Ashley, Bob, that, that memo.
Did we see the memo?
They, they sent us follow-up questions by email, so I shouldn't even call it a memo. I should say we've answered more questions that they had since the finance committee meeting that went to the chairs.
Yeah.
Share that with the committee.
We just finished it.
Today.
Yesterday, this morning, it's all one big day this week.
I don't know if you provided them the, I'm losing my train of thought, the, what was the data they were asking?
The five-year, and, yeah, the five-year per pupil. Yes, we have that in there, too. So we'll, we'll be sure you see that, but, you know, finance committees have both been, especially Concord, been asking about data points, so I've included this and both presentations we did last year. So hopefully that helps them see where we're at.
All right, we're just cranking away on goal stuff, so thank you, Shelley. This is great.
Yeah, Shelley, really, thank you.
Yeah, Shelley, thank you.
That's not a small amount of work, those slides, yeah.
First of many presentations.
Yeah, so let's move on to.
A lot more data to dig into.
Yeah, which we love.
High level.
That's good. All right, the next piece from the goals was the campus completion update. I know Tracy's not here, but Alexa and Brian, you want to take us through your progress?
Sure. We met on Friday of last week. I think our biggest piece of progress was that we have put together a list of vetted folks that we have heard from members, from either our own folks or members of the community, of people that could be willing to come together to spearhead the next sort of like wave of fundraising, to complete some of the items on our campus. So I'm actually realizing, I'm going to share that document with all of you and put it on our drive, so that if you have any one that you might add, we ask for their name, their contact information, and, you know, sort of what school they're affiliated with.
When you say fundraising, you're meaning the track?
The track specifically.
Okay.
So, so I think that's good progress. We've written a pitch email. Our intention was to send it out this week, and then as we went through the days, we thought Monday's not good, because people get too many emails on Monday, Tuesday's election day, and then today, I just feel like it wasn't a great day. So we are going to send it out probably in the next couple of days. In the meantime, and those emails can continue to go out if we get more names from any of you. So do you want to talk about your meeting with Barrett's office?
Yeah, I can talk about a couple different things. So just in terms of, you know, other sources of funding, yesterday I had a conversation with Senator Barrett's office, and I felt the timing actually ended up, the timing was good, in that they're really wrapping up the current legislative year, starting to think ahead to, to next year, and, you know, talked about the two, the two projects, both in terms of the amenities building and the track building, especially talking about accessibility, you know, concerns with, with both projects. The person from the office who I spoke to will take it to the senator. We'll continue to have some conversations in the coming months, but they also highlighted the more sort of concrete plans that we have. So I think especially coming out of our next meeting, when we start to see designs for the amenities building, you know, that's going to be really important in far as moving that forward. I did have a conversation as well with a member of the Carlisle CPC, just in terms of what might be possible on that front, and the feedback was, so apparently in 2015, when we were doing some of this other fundraising, Carlisle did give, I think it was about $400,000 towards the fields, or, you know, towards that initiative. And the sort of initial reaction was that the amenities building as a building would not qualify for consideration, but the track being very clearly outdoor wreck is something that, once we have, you know, more of an idea that we can take forward. I do feel, looking at a few other projects recently, including the playground, it's more of a, once we really know what we have already, and we know that delta, that final delta, that would then be the, the time to go forward. So I think this year is probably premature, it's definitely premature for the.
CPC.
Yeah.
Of the track, yep, okay.
And then I guess the final thing, because you brought up the amenities building, I have obviously been in touch, I think I mentioned this last time we were in a meeting, with Representative Cataldo's office. They're looking into some grants that we could be eligible for. There are some loopholes. And then the suggestion came to us as well in some of these conversations we've had with government and elected officials. I think we're going to also go to Lori Trahan's office, because we have been told that the real money is at the federal level. So we're thinking that, you know, some preliminary conversations have been had there, and it seems like that's another avenue for us. So we haven't made that contact yet, but hopefully that will be on our next update as we continue to move forward.
Are some of the grants that we're looking into, the ADA grants?
They're all ADA compliance.
Okay.
So, yes.
That would be great.
And everyone that we've talked to so far has been really supportive.
And that'd be the amenities building.
I'm sorry?
Amenities building.
Yes.
So I can't remember, how far along did we get in the consultant telling us what we could actually do as far as the track? And I can't remember.
Not very far. We've got a schematic of the space that we need, the, the amount of space we need for an eight-lane track, I believe.
And that came from?
It's from Gail.
Yeah, okay.
So it's in that same document that you referenced, pre-design for the amenities building. So we know there's space there, that's about as far as we've got. So you would need a design before you could do the next part. So if there's fundraising or grants, even just that as a starting point would be a big step forward.
So do we have like a pitch for the track?
What do you mean, like a pitch?
What is the downside of the current situation?
Oh, yes, we, Brian's actually put together that exact document, why do we need a track? We've started working.
Can we discuss that as a committee before we?
Do you have that document?
Because I have done a lot of research on this, I'll tell you. It's a little bit old, but, because I put together, in 2017, I found my document.
On why we need a track?
Yeah. It's a little.
Let me ask a question, and I'm going to be really careful how I ask this, because I'm not a Concord resident, I am a Carlisle resident. So the track at Emerson is leveraged by everyone in town, in Concord and for the high school, but it's like a town track.
Correct.
If this track is, comes to fruition at the high school, does that track go away?
No.
No, the track is very overused.
Currently, you guys probably know a little bit of this, it's used by, let's call it, five varsity sports teams, so Middlesex, Concord Academy.
Kind of ridiculous.
The two middle schools, the two private middle schools, right?
And I walk there when I'm waiting for my kids to finish at the Umbra, so it's like a.
And frequently, we need to share it.
Yeah.
With one of those entities.
Okay.
Which is a safety issue.
Got it, got it.
It's a big safety issue. I mean, the other thing you know is, the throwing is located up.
They're basically reading our documents, Cynthia.
I'm going to talk to this, and I won't deny it. So it used to be located down near the football field.
Okay.
It got moved when they did, moved, redid the football field.
Got it.
It was almost tolerable where it was. Now it's, it really separates, so you really can't run and throw.
Got it.
Yeah, it's really challenging.
So we lose meats, because we don't have the ability to do both of those. The other thing is, schools don't want to come to Concord to have their meats. There's just many reasons. It's a all-varsity sport, so there's no cuts, and some kids don't make it to the postseason, but they all participate during the season. It's also utilized by the indoor track team when possible, and cross-country when it's not safe to run on the roads. So it's used by the high school year-round, and there's things that don't happen at the high school, because we don't have a track there. So, and I could go on and on.
No, no, you answer my question.
It sounds like maybe Brian should share the document with Cynthia and get some feedback.
Yeah, that's great.
With everyone.
With everyone, with everyone.
We could talk about it in another meeting, I'm sure this isn't the last discussion of this.
Just change the date.
So, you know, definitely need to meet with the coaches to get the current lay of the land, because they can give you a much better case about what is actually going on right now.
No, that makes sense, and I assumed that you're, I kind of predicted your answer. I just wanted to make sure I fully understood it. Okay, so you, so lots of progress in two weeks.
Yeah, we're like, yeah. We could talk.
That's great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Someone should definitely talk to the coach.
I think a lot, I think.
They're working on that.
Is your document on the drive? Because I know we've added some documents to the drive. Oh, yeah, your document is on the drive.
Yeah.
So I think everything's on the.
Yeah, let's just share it to everyone.
I'll share with.
The only thing that isn't in the drive, because I had someone populate it, some contact information, is the list of people, but I'm going to move that to the drive now that we've all talked about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, that's great. So if I, if I were to wrap it up, from a campus completion, fundraising mostly for the track, and looking into some grants that might support it, but mostly fundraising, are we still looking for somebody to champion that in the community?
That's what this list of 36 people is going out to, so we're hopefully.
Perfect, nice. Find somebody to spearhead it and champion it, okay.
Can you share that list before you send the email, just so we can?
Oh, yeah, I'm not sending it anymore.
Okay, okay.
And then the second piece is the amenities building, that we have earmarked on our capital plan, but also looking into any grants that we can offset as part of our commitment. Okay, and I just want to underscore the importance of the ADA compliance for the amenities building, because as of right now, we have porta-potties on the campus. Okay.
And in two weeks, you're going to hear from the consultants. They'll be here at the meeting, bringing you, you'll have the report next week. We've got.
The 19th.
The 19th, right, it's Wednesday. The 19th, and you'll see some of the options and estimates, and feel like you've got facts and options in front of you.
Yep, that's great. All right, awesome, great updates. Let's move on to item G. I'm going to hand it over to Carrie to go through the CPS capital line item.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Brian and Julie, for letting us put a couple of Concord items on the agenda, but.
Should we turn around? No.
Yeah. This and the budget transfer, so thanks for bearing with us. I'm going to turn this over to you.
Sure, so we just wanted to give an update. Bob and I met with the town manager and CFO today to start talking about this new collaborative consolidated process we're working towards. So we were able to work with each other to share what you've seen from us. They shared a very big-picture, unvetted plan with the select board the other night. So what the thought is, at the town manager's suggestion, is that the joint meeting on the 18th be an opportunity for all, all of the committees to get informed with the same information. So I think we're going to spend a little time going through ours, they'll spend a little time going through theirs, get that baseline set for the November meeting, and then between the November and December meetings, we're going to get back together, the four of us, and try to start putting some priorities together in terms of what will happen when. I don't think you're too surprised, the Concord committee, to hear that there are asks are marginal compared to their very big asks, and I think that's the story of what's happened over time, is their needs have dragged a little behind ours, and we acknowledge that. So now it's just mirroring how we take what we do need and meld it into a structured approach. So it was a good start. There's work to be done. The 18th, when we all meet, will be about just helping all the committees hear the needs from both, you know, town and school.
And the, that's a quick turnaround from?
Yeah, we think it's fine.
You think it's fine between November and December?
Yeah, and it could be, maybe, you know, it might not be that we're going to bring you this I's dotted and T's crossed plan, that it's a real working meeting in December. That's sort of where we started to land, like, we'll start to get some ideas together, and then have the discussion in December, and if we need follow-ups into, a little bit into January, we could, could potentially do that, so.
Quick, we have, December is the last scheduled joint meeting, right? So if we need another one, we would.
Yeah.
We have a December 5th FinCom hearing in this, which is a little awkward.
Well, it depends what we want to be hearing about. I think we can talk with FinCom.
Specifically.
About where we are. I think the November 18th meeting, we can bring that up with FinCom and see what they want to do at the hearing.
It seems like we should have it, honestly, after the December meeting.
Maybe, yeah.
I mean, that just seems much more productive, to have something.
Yeah, and I was sure, while it's not part of the CPS, and since, since you're in the room, Brian and Julie, I did make sure that we came back and Carrie agreed that, you know, we, we can't lose track of the amenities building and the regional campus, even though it's not part of the CPS plan. That did happen last year, we all acknowledged that, which is part of the amenities building story. So she acknowledged that keeping track of what's happening there needs to stay part of this discussion, and she said, she thinks Doug White will be part of that discussion that night, too, and what the options are for that.
So it's just going to be, it'll be both committees?
It's select board, finance committee, and school committee on the 18th.
Both school committees.
I don't know that Carlisle's coming to that. It's a, it's part of the Concord capital.
The regional.
The regional, yeah, yes, ah, yes, I know, yes.
The other thing is, they're having, you might talk to the chair, that's, they're having their real estate hearing at 6:00. That's going to be a long hearing.
On that, on the 18th?
Yes, at 6:00.
Okay.
So it's going to be a long night. That's, yes, the shift hearing.
Okay.
The real estate shift we did in Concord. They have to renew it every year, so it's quite.
I was so hyper-focused, I didn't look at what any other, what else is going to be talking about. I just assumed we'd only be talking about what we needed to.
Yeah. I was talking November 18th, and then December 16th.
December 16th, you had said it was December 5th.
That's the, that's the FinCom public hearing on a Capitol.
Date in there that will.
So the idea was that.
Okay.
We have this meeting, then FinCom gathers feedback on the plan, and then we take that feedback and then use it at that December meeting. That was the original any task force plan.
Yeah, and it might evolve a little bit here, depending on where we are in the process, or if FinCom could give us feedback on what they heard on the 18th and help us inform the plan we're crafting, so I think it'll be okay. So thank you for the stat, letting me. For the status update, because we realized you aren't meeting again before the joint meeting.
Do you have any updates on those lights?
Sorry, Siri's talking to me. Scares me into that habit. It's like, oh, what does Siri know that? What's the question?
Any updates on the lights in the schools, the fluorescent?
Yeah, do you want to answer that?
Sure, so some lights have been updated. The auditorium, the cafeteria, well, actually, some of the auditorium, the lower section is not necessarily the top section, and then some of the recessed lights in the hallways, but not the classrooms. And in talking to our facilities managers, where they're also trying to, as lights fail, replace them with LED, so it's not the whole building, it's a lesser number. And also in our conversation with Carrie and Anthony, we talked about, you know, that's the type of thing we wouldn't necessarily prioritize in our capital funding, but don't want to drop it from our site. We want to include it and say, this is something we might want to look at for the performance management projects. So again, it's a smaller number, most likely, and, and the other part is, it's not something that's more important than things we have to fix. But if there's a way for us to fund it through a performance, whatever we call those, ESCO contracts, we would look at that.
All right, great. Let's move to section five, public comment. Our public comment period will be a period of 20 minutes. As a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public, so the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you are in the room and you would like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me, and you'll be called to speak. If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. When called to speak, please state your name and address before you speak. We will go every other, starting with a comment in the room, and then taking a comment on Zoom. You will have a time limit of three minutes. The first one I have in the room is Michael Williams. The first one I have in the room is Michael Williams.
I've attended several, excuse me, Michael Williams, 1284 Sudbury Road. I've attended several school committee meetings and spoken with a few. Here, I publicly commented on recent events that I found personally distressing, and I demanded that the body do better in serving our students and our community. In response, I was scolded by our superintendent and threatened by the committee's chair with having my microphone muted if I continued to deliver what I deemed protected speech. Because of that threat, today I have filed an open-meeting law complaint against the school committee, as my understanding of the law clearly defines the complaint resolution process. I await the committee's response. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions online? I don't see any. All right, next is Craig, is it Amiller?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Craig Amiller, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Craig Amiller, 27 Lang Street, and I'm also speaking on behalf of my wife, who couldn't be here tonight, she's a law school professor, but she, she shares my concern. At town meeting, I voted against the advice of the finance committee for your budget, because I trusted you. I assumed you knew more than, you know, the finance committee, because you're on the ground and all that, I trusted you. But I found out that while you're willing to count my vote about the budget, you didn't really want to count my vote about naming the middle school, or not naming the middle school. So my trust in you has been challenged, and it was such, such a flagrant dismissal of the town, the town became a joke in the media, we were laughed at. So it doesn't surprise me that as one of your goals, you want to enhance community engagement to ensure the school committees are in touch with the needs of the communities we serve. I don't trust you. Because last week, Mr. Williams raised very substantive points, meaningful substantive points, about the communities you serve, your written response to him was that you would no longer endure his disparagement, or you would cut off his mic. I don't know where you got this disparagement standard, it's not a legal standard, but I guess it's your standard, which is your standard. But worse, you accused him of being a threat to the safety of the participants in this meeting. He stood here like me, waited his turn, spoke reasonably in reasonable tone, and you caught, and you've defamed him, you've insulted him by saying he's a threat to your safety. I mean, don't you have any, if you throw around words like that, nobody's going to want to talk to you. I mean, am I disparaging you now? Am I going to get my mic cut off? No one wants to talk. If you have defined...
I'm really sorry. It's our policy, three minutes, I'm so sorry, we need to take the next person.
Enough said.
Thank you. Any questions on the Zoom?
I don't see anyone.
Connie, I'd like to invite you up, please.
I do that every time. Connie Levine, 149 Sto Street. I've, I've been watching a few of the meetings on TV, prior meetings this year, and a couple of things I noticed, I just want to comment on. The main one is that I'd like to see the Metco representatives consulted more during the meetings, because I've watched several meetings where Dominguez and Aisha are just sitting there and not being asked how they're doing, or do they have anything to say, and I think that, you know, they're such valuable members, because they're representing the Metco students and their families, that, and that's one of your goals this year, number two, is to improve the relationship on all that, that I just thought it would really be important for you to, you know, reach out to them at every meeting and just say, what's going on, how are you doing, and let them participate more. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions online? No. Okay, that wraps our public comment, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Okay, so one thing that you'll notice on here, we have the warrants on payroll, accounts payable for both districts. We did remove the policies for I, again, just, we know that the transfer to the website, some of that was lost in transition, so we did pull that, so that we everyone had the chance to be able to see everything when the links aren't broken. We'll figure that out and get that repopulated, Aaron's already hard at work on fixing that. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
A second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye for both committees.
Any discussion? My apologies.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye for both.
For both.
Aye for the region.
Aye for the region, okay, great. All right, let's move on to correspondence.
May I go first?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so I think this came to both, like, emails, but one to CPS and one to the region, we received a poem. The second was just to CPS, we received an invitation to attend the CMS Student Civic Action Project Showcase that Lori talked about earlier. I was traveling, so I couldn't make it, but I heard it was amazing, so, thank you to the League of Women Voters for that invitation and for their piecing that together. And I think that's it, I think that's it for both, but I don't know if I'm missing something.
We just had a request, there's a, the CPAC group is putting on a really great event, just had some approvals for some sponsorships, and I think just more, just, I'll say, as we, at least for myself, I can only speak for myself, just getting to know everyone and getting out in the public more, I don't know how to quite capture some of the verbal communication that we get, but I do think that, it's worth noting, like I said, the amenities building, just, there is the sentiment of just people looking for bathrooms. I was at the high school soccer game last night, Unified Basketball had some people come over to us and just talking, and I think the biggest piece is around accessibility, I think the conversations have focused on number of stalls and sinks and things, but there has been communication about people who are in a wheelchair that cannot get into a bathroom during some of the events, when there's just a porta-potty, and I, I think when it, because we're at a school campus, a lot of the conversations focus on students, it's, it's a multi-generational site, there are a number of people that come with varying abilities, and not having a place where somebody can go to the bathroom, and I will spare you some of the details that I've received, but just, I think it's just from a dignity standpoint, we need to figure this out. I will leave it at that. And then I think just from a correspondence, just from the emails, I think that was pretty much it. All right, chairs and liaisons update. We heard from the campus completion, I think just from the feedback that we got on the liaisons from Tracy, because she's not here, she's been busy with going to the select board meetings, I made the correction on the Doug White Fields, again, just as a reminder, the Doug White Field is a town-run part of the campus, we accepted in, what, 2034?
I think so.
So we have a little ways to go, but obviously, there's an active discussion going on around the turf replacement that should be stewarded by the town, because it's the, still the town property, but again, just that usage piece, I already corrected that. Any other liaison updates, Cynthia, anything from?
We don't liaise officially with them, but Tracy and I were both on the Climate Action Board meeting, and there was lots of public comment about the replacement of the turf, so they tried to make it clear that they weren't necessarily the gatekeepers on the project, that's the select board and the Rec Commission, and the Recreation Department, and Town Manager. So she has $100,000 in ARPA money earmarked for the study, not necessarily going to take the $100,000 to do a study of the replacement of the turf and the option, so I have no idea where that situation is.
Okay. Great. Anyone else have any updates from anything else?
I have two quick things. One is, we've, Lori talked about this earlier, too, but just response to FinCom on their questions, and I'll forward that around, sorry, I didn't do that earlier.
They're still coming in, so we're having a hard time keeping up.
Well, one came in just as we were about to start our meeting, so, but anyway, I will be better about forwarding those faster, but, and then, one, just as a note to everyone, we have a policy subcommittee meeting next week, so that agenda will be posted, I think, tomorrow.
13th?
Yes. Wednesday morning, I think, before 8:30?
8:30.
Wednesday at 8:30. I think that's it.
Okay. And then, I think just for my own self, I guess it's a mixture of chairs and liaison, I am the liaison to CPAC, I got, still figuring out the schedule, I got notified about an hour before the meeting, and I just couldn't make it, so I couldn't even ask for backup, but I will be at the next one, but I did hear of the events that they're, they're working on, which is great. The other piece of, which has actually been really great, is I'm on the CPAC in Carlisle, too, so just having a view of what both towns are doing has been very helpful. And then, I had, I had the opportunity to go to my first PA meeting for the high school, so thank you to Alexa and Tracy for inviting me. It was great to get out and just hear how much work is done by parents, and I promised them a plug, if you are not involved and you have students at the high school, it is a parent-led organization, we would love to have you join, even just to come and, like I will say, I just stayed for 15 minutes afterward to pack up some student directories, and there was just five of us, and we've got a bunch of stuff done, so even something simple like that, bring a cup of coffee and help out with some of that kind of work, I know Kimberlin and Matt Boger would be incredibly appreciative of that. It's just like, it's the same group of people, we want to see some new faces, that would be wonderful. And then, I think just, Carrie started to allude to it, we've been working a lot with FinCom and just answering some of the questions. Some of the other pieces that we've been trying to do is, I don't want to project, I'll just give my own perspective, there is just, we have these meetings, obviously, out in the public, but I know all of us are liaising to different groups, but then there's actually the work that we're trying to get done as well, so, Brian, you mentioned you're talking to the Senator's Office and talking with different grants and things like that, there's just a lot happening. So I've been trying to distill things with anyone we're working with into like one-page briefs or one slide. So we did have an opportunity, Carrie, Alexa, Dr. Hunter and I, when we met with FinCom, to just give a one-page overview of headwinds and tailwinds of what's happening without a district, for example, that's definitely served, I think, as a best practice of, look at all this stuff that's happening from a circuit breaker or cost of transportation, but then also look at what's some of the legislation that's happening, so having that kind of dual view is, is really helpful. I think the second piece that we're starting to do is even with the amenities building, just having a preview, we're going to be meeting with the Town Manager and members of the Select Board tomorrow, just to give, again, a preview before these, these big meetings, just so if we can try to make some headway with a smaller group, that would be ideal. And then, the last piece, I would just say, and some of you may have seen, Dominguez, Carrie and I were just starting to go through the YRBS results, that's something that I would love to dig into any, any, with anyone, it is such a dense document, we went through it once, let's keep going through it, I think all of us found insights that we want to dig into that more. Like Dominguez and I were saying, like, one percentage of any of those numbers is a really tough conversation when you're talking about youth risk, so let's keep those conversations going, it's not only in our goals, I think just all of us, that's why we show up here, is for the kids, so let's keep doing that. I think those are the biggest pieces, anything else from you, Carrie?
Can I just add, the committee's presence at school events that maybe not even your own kids are at, is not going unnoticed and is really appreciated, the visibility is being recognized, at least by the leadership team, for sure, so, just thank you, that's not a requirement, and hopefully that's you doing the fun part of the job the way I do, but, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I will say, going to the Unified Basketball, I don't want to speak for you, Andrew, but like, that was like being at a college basketball game, the amount of excitement that was in the gym that night, it was amazing.
Yeah, you had all the varsity teams come in, and the cheerleaders who were there, it was awesome.
Yeah, it was great. I was like waiting for somebody to like rip their shirt off, and like, letters and stuff like that, like being at a Michigan game or something.
Yeah.
Okay, with that being said, we, we're at the end, we're going to move into executive session, so the Congress...
Julie, can I just ask, since you brought up the youth risk survey, can you get it posted someplace?
Yeah, we're posting it today, so forgive us on the links that are broken since the new webpage went live, we're working on it, what we're not going to be able to do is recreate the whole webpage, nor should we, because that was the whole point, but there are some key ones, that one we fixed this afternoon, and we're working on it now.
Can we post the capital plan in response to the FinCom?
The capital plan can, is getting attached to the last agenda where we talked about it, Erin was finishing that up today.
Okay, okay.
I think, so what she's working on, just so the community knows, everything from this fiscal year, well, start of school is where we've decided to start, start of school until now is getting rebuilt.
All right, that's fine.
Everything else we have, if people want it, as I speak to the community at large, we can access it, it's just not public-facing anymore, because webpage had gotten way too dense, so it's still available if people just want to know, but...
Good points, we can, but we can get those, those things we were mentioning, for sure.
And then the other one, I don't think we have it attached to our agenda, is the, this year's enrollment report.
For, on today's agenda? The October one? I'm not sure what you're referencing.
Was it posted in an agenda, the enrollment?
No, it has not been posted in an agenda.
It was posted, I'm saying, but it's gone now.
We can look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, good point. Okay, we're going to move into executive session, the Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee will...
You can't read it.
You can't do it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that the Concord School Committee and Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee will enter into executive session, under purpose two of the open-meeting law, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with the superintendent of schools, and purpose seven, to comply with, oh god, my contact, or act under authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, specifically MGL 30A, section, Jesus, I can't read anything, section 22A and F, with regard to review and approval of executive session minutes from October 8, 2024, and we will not return to open session.
Second.
Nice job.
All in favor?
Anderson, aye for both.
Hertcheck, aye for both.
Rainey, aye for both, I don't even know where.
Rankin, aye for both.
Viola, aye for the region.
Waterson, aye for the region.
Good night, you guys, thank you so much, see you.